Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's meeting, regular reading of the Trinity County Planning Commission. It is December 13th, 2018. Public comments. Members of the public may address the Planning Commission concerning matters within their own jurisdiction or district which are not listed on tonight's agenda in request that the matter be agudized for a future meeting. No actions may be taken on these matters in this meeting. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission? Again, not tonight's agenda, please go forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Brower from Johnson City. And I think this is an appropriate time to maybe get an update on the Sequo project. Back in September, I know I got a contract outside with consultant to stay even remotely on schedule. We should have had some sort of public scoping workshops, something like that by this point. So it'd be great if staff gave us an update on the Sequo. It's really, really important to the conversations we're going to be having tonight. And I think it should be definitely woven into the more global discussions that we're wrestling with it tonight.
Mr. Brower? Anyone else? I mean, if there's not real close public comment. Agenda item number three, minutes for November 8th, 2018. Any questions or corrections needed on the minutes as stated?
Page two, bottom paragraph, fourth line down. Sentence begins, however you're spotted when the work looked at options particularly regarding roofing. And here's where it's difficult because it, I believe that should be iterative. Although I like iterative.
Thank you, Commissioner McHugh. Any further corrections or comments while making the motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
Motion to approve minutes as amended. Those in favor of the motion presented?
Aye.
As opposed?
I abstain.
Commissioner Stewart was asked, that night, the motion carries unanimously to three minutes. Old business, none. New business, agenda item number four, amendment to section 43 of the zoning ordinance, number 315 regarding activation of campus applicant training.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this was here on October 25th, and it is back to you again this evening because the ad hoc committee took a look at it after you made some recommendations and realized, for one, the meeting was very long that night. And there were some things that by the end of that meeting, about three and a half hours into it, it looked like it was really difficult to do a thorough job evaluating the things that were still left to consider. So we sent out a very sloppy copy, I guess for lack of a better description. In this, with the staff report, the revisions that were in the ordinance had gone through a series of people, and those all showed up in different colors in track changes. We wanted to make sure that you could see what had been changed. And yet it was really difficult to understand it because you didn't see who had changed what. So we produced another copy this evening that we handed to you. And I'll go through and I can compare what was with the staff report and this copy that is a little bit more simple. So you can see that some of the recommendations that you made, the ad hoc committee accepted, and some, they said, no, we want to send it back and have you think about that a little bit more. Okay? So from the beginning, if you're comparing page by page, you can do that. But I suppose the easiest thing is if I go with the copy that you have this evening that we just gave to you this evening that's a little bit cleaner, let's go with that copy. Okay? So on page four. The definition of designated area was the same thing that you had reviewed before on October 25th. There was no change on that. On page five, the definition of fully enclosed and secure structure was a sentence fragment. Somehow in the revision process, there was a portion of that sentence that got lost. And so that's the complete sentence. The rest of it is the same from what you reviewed before. On page six. Wildlife exclusionary fencing was, you did discuss fencing when this was here before you on October 25th and made a recommendation, and that is the same thing as what you see right there. The definition of canopy down below on that same page remains the same. That's a verbatim definition of what the states have passed as well. And then the short clip at the end of that page is the same as what you reviewed before also. Commissioner McHugh offered several, he had several editor revisions that you suggested. He caught some of these things, but. And on page seven. Letter B says, "The priority for receiving specialty cottage outdoor licenses within Trinity County Waterworks District Number One shall be based on date of application with the county." Now that Trinity County Waterworks District Number One is not a so-called opt-out area, there's really no need for that. The rest is the same on that page. Moving over to page eight. The rest is the same on that page. Page nine will require the most clarification. So there was a lot of discussion, as you remember, regarding multiple licenses and setbacks and variances. And the copy that you received with your staff report included the deletion that you made. Yet the ad hoc decided, no, we'd like to keep setbacks in as somewhat of a mitigation measure because if one site, we recognize that there could be nuisances. If one site has a potential to cause a nuisance, then multiple sites, there could be that likelihood there. And so they wanted to stick with something. And these are arbitrary. They had to have some place to start, so they did put in these setback distances rated, kind of scaled to the number of licenses. We asked for, when we did the staff report also, we asked for some clarification because I can't stress enough how, how really important it is that we can hear what you say. We've watched the video, no joke, 15 times trying to make sure we understood the motions toward the end of that meeting were really difficult to track. And so what we're starting to do now is put them on a computer and say, is this what you, is this what you mean? And I know there was, there were comments about that, like, boy, that's hard to verbalize. Well, it was really hard to capture also. So we want to make sure that we're clear on clear motions. The biggest issue, I guess, with the multiple licenses also was that the ad hoc did fully support the recommendations that you made regarding use permits. So the idea of director's use permit required for two or three 10,000-foot, let's put it like this, director's permit up to 10, 30,000 square feet of canopy. Conditional use permit required for anything over that. Okay? Right now, the ad hoc proposed no setback variances for properties with multiple licenses other than multiple licenses that are located on ag-zoned districts like Ag Preserve, Ag And if you turn the page, page 10. We already discussed toward the top, the permit requirements, the appropriate use permit, like we just discussed, director's use permit or conditional use permit. Down at the end of the page, everything is pretty much the same. There was a little clarification here on multiple, from multiple licenses at the top of page 11. It says, "For multiple licenses, a legal parcel does not require a legal dwelling of one of the other licensed properties under identical ownership, has legal dwelling and is within a quarter of an hour mile of the legal parcel." So that might be worth a little more discussion as well. I think you did a flyby on it on October 25th. And the rest of the edits on that page are the same as what you reviewed before. Switching over to page 12. Everything here is the same. Again, it was kind of tricky. I don't think with the length of the meeting on October 25th, I don't think you got to the treatment of non, so-called non-recreational public lands or TPZ. Open space has, they did take open space off of there. That's a small edit. The rest of it is the same. On page 13. The idea of a lockable gate on the fence was removed from letter E. But then you, Planning Commission, recommended keeping it in. So there it is. There was another recommendation to remove letter P. The use of gas products such as, but not limited to, butane is prohibited consistent with zoning ordinance 315-797. So that was our, that's our personal row ordinance, and we have a licensing system for somebody who does want to use butane. So there's really not a need for that. And the rest of the edits on page 14 are the same. As are the edits on page 15. And that's it. So there are quite a few, and if you have any questions about why they were proposing, the ad hoc proposed, what they proposed after you made your recommendations, then let me know.
I do have a question. When was this information or this new, when was this, when was this received by, by staff?
We wrapped that up today.
One note that I think the ad hoc committee wanted to kind of stress tonight was the commission to focus on substance as far as lettering, numbering, some of the other things that need to be finalized. They're really just looking for the content, and there will be final reviews and renumbering if necessary based on the comments tonight. So really just substance. The final draft will pass through and make sure that all of these minor errors are corrected.
Thank you, Councilor.
The ad hoc did try to make a new question on the staff. I can't hear you, Rick.
Yes, please.
It's just that I wanted to make sure that the commission understood that the ad hoc was involved, tried to adopt this, and staff did not have the ability until tonight.
Little bit of a short notice there. Commissioners, any clarifications, questions for staff before we open the public comment?
I would just comment that thank you for bringing in a clarified version tonight. While we will focus on substance and not numbering, the draft was abysmal in terms of readability. So this is much better. So thank you for bringing it in.
If there's no other clarification sitting here from staff, we're going to open public comment. I do want to remind everyone, the time limit is three minutes for your comments.
Could you read what's coming up before public comment?
Say that again.
What is open for discussion on this?
Yes, I will clarify this. Basically, on our last meeting, we broke it down by everything the ad hoc committee wanted us to discuss. Basically, we are opening public comment for the entire, for the entire staff report that was presented. We're not going to break it down by sections as we did last time. I think the public had ample opportunity on the last meeting to vet many of their concerns one by one. This is the second time where we visit, and we're visiting this amendment. We're just going to focus on the entire amendment of the ordinance basically. So again, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please also, I know a lot of folks want to chime in and speak what's on their mind, but let's try also not to be redundant. You know, like, we don't want to keep hearing the same thing over and over. I understand that many people have same concerns, but just be mindful of that. And the last thing, as always, no secondary comments. If you have the opportunity, please come present your comments and, you know, for some, and then let someone else have a turn as well. So with that said, let's open public comment regarding this. Anyone wishing to address their commission regarding this item? Just go forward, state your name for the record.
Jay Russell, President of State Park. Good evening, Commissioner. You know, you don't want us to get specific, but one of the things that's bothered me about what we're looking at with the multiple licenses since this came out is the setbacks. I know everybody's talked about it, but my wife has a 648 for parcel, zoned unclassified resource, it's on four sides by national forest, found other residents for miles. Ninety percent of the places I can cultivate out, I thought it would not meet those setbacks. That's a square mile of land. Not only that, I'm zoned unclassified. The board already said that they're going to rezone us. The planning department has said multiple times, it's probably going to be Ag Forest, Ag Forest. But if I get rezoned to Ag Forest, setbacks are my problem. But am I supposed to wait for Trinity County to pro bono rezone us as they promised to do because I don't think that's going to be in town of fashion? So where is, you know, those setbacks can't work for anybody, but also if you're getting rezoned by the county, where do you fall with that?
Commissioners, my name is Jack Norland. I was representing a group of people in submitting a public comment from Dredger Camp Special Unit Development in Johnson City, where we have open space on private property. And our position was that we should be exempted from the lifetime variance provision for open space. Does this mean we need not comment that that would not happen? Or?
Well, apparently from, in light of the revisions that were presented today, I guess open space will not be included in the lifetime variance. So welcome to comment as you wish, Mr. Norland, or?
Well, I said I'd like to comment to one of the members of the ad hoc. Maybe they read it. So as you please. I'm not going to waste your time. If it's not on the table, it's off the table.
Excellent.
I do want to comment to a person by the name of James Lee, UC Riparian Ecologist. He was going to be here tonight to speak and address you, but he became ill. So he wrote a public comment, but it was late because he gets sick today. And he just asked me if I would quote a couple passages from it so that the public could hear what he had to say. And one is, "This issue came to my attention through a letter from the residents of Dredger Camp S U Gate to the Planning Commission," which I completely agree with. He went on to say, and his position was much broader than the position that the Dredger Camp residents were taking. Quote, "I'm very concerned that allowing lifetime variances for parcels near open space TPZ or federal ground will focus commercial cannabis expansion in these areas will do the most harm to the most important natural resources of our county. An annual reapplication for variance would allow people to speak up when they see a problem that they might not even have been aware of when the initial variance was granted." And in closing, he said, "I am a wildlife and fisheries biologist for over 20 years. I currently focus on riparian ecology. The proposed lifetime commercial cannabis variance is very concerning to me." End quote. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Nicholas Holliday, Department Ranch. I wanted to kind of speak on the new definition of canopy that's in here that is now saying 10 feet apart or non-contiguous or 10 feet apart or a wall. Some of us have already built greenhouses seven feet apart, spent lots of money doing permanent greenhouses like this. The state has already come up with canopy definitions of it. We are being inspected by the state as well. So can we just go with what the state is doing with canopy? Make things a lot easier on everybody. I don't know when that got thrown in here, tonight's first time I saw this. Also, fencing, I know we got, went round and round about this the other day. I think possibly a solution would be up to the discretion of the inspector because obviously at 640 acres and no one around for miles, I'm three sides national forest with myself as the other neighbor. It just doesn't make sense. There isn't a fence out there that's going to keep deer, bear, or a high schooler out. It's not going to happen, you know? So that was something, and I just wanted to kind of say, I did bring in some different types of fencing for visual aids for you guys because I feel like there's different levels to it, and it's room for discussion if you feel like discussing it. One of the other things, and we skipped over this on page 10, Leslie, when you were speaking about the ag land and multiple licenses, I thought it was on 10? Maybe I'm wrong. All right, maybe I'm wrong. Basically, you were saying that there's no variances needed on ag land, correct? Somewhere else, right past that, it says that there is no conditional use permit for ag land over multiple licenses, and that was just skipped over. So I just wanted to make sure that that was something that was understood by everybody. And yeah, you know, like I said, the setbacks, I know everyone's going to talk about this. I can meet them, but not very many people can. It is like really, really hard on us farmers to figure this out. I know that Trinity County is all across the board, every different types of land except for coastal, which I don't think we have. So you guys can consider everybody here. I know it's hard, but maybe leave it up to somewhat of the discretion of the inspector and planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday.
Terry Myers, Johnson City. Just a couple minor things. Since we were talking about fences and Leslie wasn't here last time, Leslie is a direct witness to Lieutenant Middles saying that six-foot fences catch animals, they don't protect against them, they actually harm animals. She's a witness on my property to the Fish and Wildlife Head Person explaining this. So she wasn't here last time, so I couldn't have her. She was here, and so that was why that fencing thing's beyond ridiculous. But the other thing I wanted to talk about was the setbacks. This is back to hypotheticals, and I like to deal in reality. Reality is, we don't have any flat acreage that maps out like this, people, come on. Jake has a mile, and this inhibits him. This is ridiculous. The setback should be like any other agricultural crop. We should really think about wine. Half the ad hoc committee grows an agricultural crop in this county. Have to be careful on imposing setbacks against me when you're in a competing crop that is not really, you know, got a chance to maybe economically help this community. Very small compared to what this could do. So we need to be helpful in this process here, and I think make this more viable for the people that can actually do this. There's a lot of people falling out of this process. It's going to be very, very tough on everybody. We need to do this correctly and be honest. I don't know very many flat parcels in this county. It just doesn't happen. This should be based on engineers and scientists. It shouldn't be based on assumptions and hypotheticals. So let's come back to reality here, and let's throw out these setbacks because that's an absolute joke. Think 30 feet for all of these would be more realistic. And we should probably let engineers decide if properties are safe like the water board does. If your water board passes a safety net here. This is about safety, environmental safety, and make an economic viability move forward in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
My name is Catherine Miller. I'm a homeowner in Bucktail subdivision. I'm reading your staff report here, and it was saying that Commissioner Stewart moved to exclude the Trinity County Waterworks District One from the opt-out area and include Bucktail subdivision. And Commissioner Matthews said he's not as supportive of putting Bucktail subdivision in the opt-out without seeing a petition or something. I didn't find out about this until yesterday morning. I hastily put together a small petition with signatures. The thing about Bucktail subdivision is that over half, over half of the parcels that are in that subdivision are owned by out-of-town owners. So they have a hard time finding out what's going on with the Planning Commission or with anything up here. I know several of them, and I've spoken with them on this opt-out thing, and most of them agree. I didn't have time to get their signatures or anything like that. There was a time when we asked all of the people to write in to the Planning Commission. We were told that there were several letters written, but nobody seems to know where they are. So the only thing I've got now is a petition with some signatures on it of the permanent residents that are in Bucktail. And we do want to be in the opt-out. And so I wanted to make sure that you got this so that you can, should I hand it to somebody?
Please, please.
Okay, great. Are we going to be notified if we are in the opt-out or? Can you assure us that we will be or?
So there won't be any assurance that you will be, but if it is a part of the ordinance, you'll be able to find it there. And any motion that the commission makes tonight would be advisory, so if you want to follow it through the Board Supervisors, that would be the conclusion.
Board Supervisors. That might be where all of our letters are, at the Board Supervisors.
That may be. I'm not, I'm not sure if staff doesn't have them. I'm not, I'm not sure if staff doesn't have them. You may follow it there. So the recommendations from the commission will go to the board and the board will finalize this and that, and that way they'll know whether you're in an opt-out area or not.
Okay. One other thing that might help with Bucktail subdivision is the fact that we are within the Lewiston Community Services District. So it's, it's like we would be included in Lewiston. So I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Hello, Bill Burton, Johnson City. This, this ordinance is getting harder and harder for those that are going to try and participate. That's, when we first started this thing, obviously, we had, we chose a compromise setback distance that became 350 feet. Some of us were saying 200 feet, some people were saying 80 feet, some people were saying other distances. It really wasn't clear what the good compromise would be. So I think that's really, and other counties were doing that at the same time. So that, that is slowly being worked out and since we did go with 350 feet, I think we should at least stick with it, not, not increase it. We need a consistency for a bit of time here. So think about that. And then you know where that section is where you increase it 350 to 400 or whatever the distances were. That's new and confusing. And I want to say one more thing about just being difficult for people to participate. The black market decides not to participate if this is too difficult. And the whole idea here is to get people engaged and those here are trying, here need help and need their, their issues listened to. So I'm not a grower, but I'm here helping that process of, of having this be successful in this county. Meanwhile, Humboldt is maintaining itself and maintaining an economy. You know, if we fall back away from participation, we see restaurants close, we see these problems. And also, when you change the 350 feet, 400, 500 foot thing, it do affect property values all across the county. If, if we make it way too difficult, property values are going to fall, property taxes will fall, and likewise, the spin-off economy will fall. It's a balancing act. I, I know you know that, but I think you have confidence in not making this too hard for everybody. And then lastly, at the last meeting, we talked about fences a lot. I think I heard that in Oregon, there were no fences required in some places. And I was around this, these last few weeks and we went places and then looked and thought it would be terrible to have more and more fences. This county is going to look really ridiculous with fences in some really strange places or right next to roads that we really want to have good views. It's not really necessary for the industry and it would be very easy on page, I think it was on page six, where you address where wildlife exclusionary fence is. And it's, you have an item there, it's explaining what it is, you could just end that sentence with fencing is not required for a strikeout type one C specialty cottage. And just say fencing is not required for licenses. That would make this ordinance much more workable, I think, to the whole group here. There's one other place where that's also mentioned about the fencing thing. It's where there's a lock discussion back on page 13, I think Leslie brought that up. And you could do the same maneuver of striking. It's in item E, the end of the, it's presentation.
Mr. Burton.
So that, it'd be very easy to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Good evening, Commissioners Adrian Keyes and Hayfork. Want to talk about the part of the definition of canopy and also how that plays into the designated area. Within item three under canopy, it talks about the 10-foot spacing. I do believe the state removed that as far as the spacing between the rows. My, my last inspection, Cody told me that I would probably be able to designate my planting bays that are defined by T-posts as individual canopy areas. Where I know I've got it is just one big square, 100 foot by 100 foot. My bays are five feet wide and 100 feet long. So if you look at it like that, in fact, I only have 5,000 square feet of cultivation as, as designated by the T-post that composed the bays versus this giant square. And I just cannot increase up to that 10,000 square foot inside of a fence is only 250% the size of the garden. I'm already at 200 square feet or times 200% and, and fall, and there's, there's no more room. It just doesn't work. And then if you were also adding that 10 feet, that would throw your centering off to such a point that a 10,000 square foot garden would probably occupy nearly a half an acre. And that's the state definition and then I would really like to be able to achieve my full team if we're looking to try and get a license stacking going on because I already realize I could be increasing my production under my licenses. It's going to be paying yet for other licenses to simply end up with the amount of cultivation that I've already permitted for. So it's a conundrum there and I know it's, it's been a long and confusing process, but I hope we can all get it sorted out. That's my main concern on this. Hope there's some other things, but most people are covering those, so that's one of my mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keyes.
My name is Mike DC. I'm also from the Bucktail subdivision. And about a year ago, I had a discussion with Katie Quinn and requested if we would like to request to opt-out. And at that point in time, I contacted most of my neighbors that live there. And I understand there's about 25 documents that were processed to the supervisors to opt-out from those people. We have about under 20 houses that are full-time residents and the balance are here again like vacation residents. So I think those 25 documents should be found and make Bucktail a part of the opt-out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DC. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening, Commissioners Sonny Hoffman, Hayfork. Under multiple licenses permit requirement, section line C, Commissioner Fraser suggested an incentive for cannabis operators operating out of ag, ag reserve and ag force not to need a conditional use permit. I'm suggesting to add a zoning to that, which is industrial, reasoning twofold. One, if you read under the uses approved, under industrial, it says all ag uses approved with the exception of a hog farm, which you need a conditional use permit. And secondly, I, I just was approved by the commission last month to, for three conditional use permits, nursery, one acre cultivation, and distribution. So there's already going to be a concentrated level of cannabis activity happening in these zones, so. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday.
Good evening, London City. I'd like the board to always consider the natural resources and the limitations that we have in this county when issuing multiple licenses, especially considering on the same parcel. But not only does the water on the parcel have to cover the additional grows, facilities, et cetera, but you have to take into consideration everybody downstream. You have to take into consideration if they're drawing a will, is that will be pulling water directly from a water source to a creek? The same thing applies to springs. I hear all the time, "I've got a well, I've got springs, it's not affecting anybody." It does. I, I know, I run out of water every year. I didn't before the rose. And so we also have to keep into consideration, unfortunately, all these great people are trying to do the right thing and have white licenses, but there, the consideration you guys have to, have to make too is all those growers out there are performing those same resources that aren't part of this process. And if you grant those multiple licenses without inspecting the water resources and how they affect the entire county, not just the downwater individuals, but also the creeks, et cetera, that they're pouring that water from. This county, that's the reason why there's such limitations in agriculture, et cetera. We never have the water. We don't have the water to willy-noly continue to grant licenses, especially on the same parcel. This takes that and, and leaves the rest of us literally in the dust. The other thing I wanted to take into consideration is the one-year residency requirement here that that might be discussed tonight. I want to protect the, the white guys here. I don't know if they realize it, but if they limit those, that residency requirement, there's Marv Earl, there's, there's Philip Morris, they can come in here and just grow whatever they want because they don't have a residency requirement. It protects them and the small farmer from just the ad hoc massive grows, et cetera. And I know they, they don't want that. Again, though, those natural resources aren't there for those large growths. So I think it's important to protect what we have now. I disagree with every two weeks, the growers who've got a license with the, with the restrictions when they got the license, knowing exactly what they are, and every two weeks they come in here and try to change it. And you guys are the most accommodating people I've ever seen, but unfortunately, it leaves the rest of us in limbo and chaos because we don't know from week to week what's going to change. We would like some stability and I believe stability, as the other individual mentioned, will provide you guys necessary tools to determine what natural resources are available. If you let a couple seasons go by before you start making all these changes, you'll find that those water resources are being taken away with just the limited amount that you have now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday.
Good evening, Commissioners Justin Hawkins, Hayfork. I just wanted to start first off with the definition of canopy. Talked about it a couple times already, but in the packet I'm passing out right now are copies of the current emergency regulations definitions and also a copy of the proposed permanent regulations definition on the second page. You'll notice that they're saying they do not match the county's definition. License holders would like to have one yard stick, please. Would like to may be measured by the state's definition. You'll notice the 10-foot distance is not in there, that's in the county's proposal. So I propose that we just change the definition of canopy to read C section 8000 of the CFA regulations and we'll make it easy that way. I'd like to mention I support the Bucktail part out just off the hand right now. I think they deserve, they're going to come in and show support, I think that they should get, frankly. I'm not so sure if it's legal, but that's just my opinion. On the setback distances for multiple licenses on page nine, they're proposing 350 feet for two licenses. So when we say 350 feet, sometimes we treat it as dwelling setback requirement from a house for the garden. That's a different calculation than property line setback, which is currently 35 feet for a 10,000 square foot garden. If you were to multiply the canopy by two, the setback could possibly be 70 perhaps. I'm reading 350. Now, I think someone, maybe the county brought in a chart, pretty nice, but it doesn't show a reasonable flow. I mean, once you get a second license, you've got a setback that is 11 times the current amount. It doesn't seem reasonable. I think we talked about it last time and anyways, I just think it's a little bit overboard. I understand mitigations. A workaround perhaps, and I think this is a reasonable one, is that if you're seeking a license on an adjoining parcel, a second parcel, we should have the normal setbacks that apply to a parcel with one license. I mean, if it's a legal separate parcel and we've been prevented from using that legal parcel by the county and the restrictions placed by the ordinances, you want to use an adjoining parcel, I think there should be normal setbacks. And especially if you own that second parcel, 350 feet is kind of difficult with the topography in, in this county. There's a lot of other things, I wish I had time to kind of cash all the errors that, and omissions that really should be allowed. But I really think we need a fee study and there's not one including, we haven't had one done, and the money from our program is currently going to the sheriff's office buying vehicles, probably buying deputies. And if the sheriff's office eradication program is going to be funded by license holders, then we'll never have enough money in this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Is there any other comments from the public?
Good evening, Commissioners. Once again, John Brower from Johnson City. And I also think that the setback requirements should be from neighboring dwelling, not property lines, though we, we've already been through this many times and decided that if the impact is an odor impact to neighboring residences, then let's make it from residents. We've already wrestled with this. It does, just doesn't, the property line thing just doesn't work in this mountainous terrain. But more importantly than that is this matter of canopy definition. And I'm not sure what happened here, but the state has had the same canopy definition for over a year now. Everybody's learned to live with it. People have put in a tremendous amount of infrastructure to reflect the state canopy definitions. And our county hasn't had a canopy definition and we've kind of relied on the state until now. At the last meeting, it was proposed to adopt the state definition. Didn't really get touched on in the meeting, but I want to make sure it gets handled tonight. And then the staff report until today changed it to some weird 10-foot, added the 10-foot measurement. And then now the new combined ordinance that we're working off of tonight, once again, I'll echo what these other folks said, that 10-foot measurement is added again. So Leslie, you already said that it reflected, verbatim, was the state definition, but it's not. Somebody has thrown this 10 feet, this, this at least 10 feet of open space in on HH line three, item three. So we really need to get this settled. I think it makes no sense to have anything other than the state definition. I don't know who thought that up, this 10-feet measurement, but I don't, I don't see who it possibly benefits. And I also want to ask again, I mean, I think we really need an update on what's happening in the sequel process, really before the conversation goes any further tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lisa Wright from Lewiston. First, I have to say that I find it incredibly disturbing that in a democratic republic, we have an open public meeting, we have an open voting process that you have taken input from the public, and a closed meeting, secret ad hoc committee can come and change it and bring it back to you trying to change back to what they had originally proposed. Incredibly disturbing. I don't think it's actually legal to be done. It's been going on for two years. Ad hocs are temporary. It was supposed to be done with the urgency ordinance. So I'm going to ask you, please, consider what has been given to you in public comment as well as what you all discussed and voted on, and do not revert back to making changes from the secret committee. I would like to comment as well on designated area. So we're still, we still have that in this ordinance and it goes contrary to the state again. Where I find the designated area mentioned in the state is in the canopy definition, means the designated area of a licensed premise that will contain mature plants at any one point in time. And instead, we're trying to add in, it contains everything related to cannabis and we're putting a 250%. It doesn't correspond to the state. It's going to create problems with our state inspections. I think you need to remove our reference to designated area, not just increase it to 250%. We have a real inconsistency as well in the ordinance and that is sometimes we refer to an applicant, sometimes we refer to a person, and one time we refer to an entity. That again is not the same as the state. It's creating problems in applying for state licenses and then coming back and names maybe not quite matching business entities or what most people are doing at the state level. We're not doing that here. So I think a real thorough review of this ordinance for consistency and wording has not been done and it's very important. I'll also speak real quickly to the wildlife exclusionary fencing. Fish and Wildlife came out very clearly at the meeting last time in their letter and said, "We do not support this." Fish and Wildlife is Trinity County's kind of oversight for our sequel Fish and Wildlife is Trinket County's kind of oversight for our sequel compliance, as well as whom we should be looking to for things related to wildlife. They don't support it. The cultivators who here spoke last time don't support it. Remove the wildlife exclusionary fencing. There's, I'm just going to comment real quickly. I took this off the Internet this morning, so it's different than what you have. It's under two application B. That seems like a really messy paragraph. We refer to specialty outdoor cottage, we refer to Trinket Waterworks District based on date of application. It's outdated. That really needs to be worked. It refers to the urgency ordinance as well. Just not a nice clean copy yet, and it's really concerning that it's coming back after, you know, numerous iterations and we don't have clean copies. So I'm asking you, please, try to be consistent with the state. I think that's the most important thing. Listen to Fish and Wildlife, work with Fish and Wildlife, especially when it comes to wildlife matters such like the wildlife exclusionary fencing. Multiple license is a whole nother area, but my time is up, so thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tom Belenka, Douglas City. I'm going to kind of skip over the things I agree with that everybody else says. I think Mr. Brower just said, if we are going to do enhanced setbacks for staff licenses, I think it's appropriate to keep it consistent with the residence rather than a property line. I know this is true in my case, I think in Nick Collins' and Jake's case. I might be 150 feet off my property line, but I can go 10 miles in that direction before I get to a house. My house is in Lewiston, and I'm in Douglas City. In the other direction, where I'm 400 feet off my property line, the next house is in Shasta County. So maybe, you know, keeping it on residences, because if, we're talking about impacts, it's an impact to a residence of somebody who may not like the opportunity, the requirement to smell cannabis. And then in terms of variances, I guess there are two sections. One is the variances should not be available for those. I'm not sure you can really do that. I mean, a variance is a variance. All a variance is somebody bringing requests to this commission and saying, hey, I think this part of law shouldn't apply to this project. I think that's an important part. So we did create a hybrid type of variance for cannabis. It's that one-year thing, it only costs $700, and you've seen more than your fair share of them, so I don't need to tell you about them. So I could see limiting that kind of thing, but a regular variance is just a variance. So I think we should be allowed to have them. For instance, if somebody were going to have a square mile of property that's 50 feet off of the property line, but, you know, miles away from the house, let them bring that to the commission, and then you can weigh that. And that's what the point of the commission does. The same goes back to on variances as this wildlife exclusionary fence. The last time we decided we needed wildlife exclusionary fence to keep high school kids out of property. So I understand that security is a concern. I understand that kids do stupid things. So if we want to have security fencing, we should call it security fencing or other measures, because when somebody comes for a variance, I don't want to come for a variance and say, hey, I've got lights and motion detectors to keep kids out. What in fact, the question is deer and vice versa. So if it's really security fencing, let's call it security fencing, not wildlife exclusionary fencing. Otherwise, I trust your good judgment to wrestle through this, and I too support the bucktail off that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belenka. Anyone else? I think that there's not one of those public comment. Get back to the commission.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Commissioners, there's a bit of ground to cover. Since we have ample opportunity to vet last time separate issues for sake of clarity and just to structure it somehow, I'd like to go, and if it pleases the commission as well, through the whole wardens as is written. And as we read along, if anything strikes you or you want to bring comments or make suggestions as we go along. With that said, I guess the first area we would cover then would be Section 1, definitions. The last meeting, we talked about designated areas well over an hour, and I don't really think we got anywhere with it personally. I don't know if it's the commission's choosing to reevaluate this one more time or skip over it, move on to... Anything else regarding definition canopy? It has definitely been brought up by several members of the public. I think that is definitely worth a look at.
That's not actually a definition. It is. I stand corrected. It's the very last item. So how are you, Mr. Chairman, how are you? You've already brought up three different, sorry, eight.
I'm just, I'm just trying to facilitate the conversation, Mr. Q. I'm happy to, whatever anyone wants to begin with, or any of those definitions.
Okay. First one on the list that you brought up is designated area. I think we did vet that at length the last time, although we concluded that the way it's worded in this updated draft, which I think is the same as the early one, but is where we landed at the last meeting after at least an hour.
Yeah, I mean, there are like two paths, right? One is you just use the state definition, or we have this more detailed definition that we've worked on for a long time and we approved at the last meeting. I can go either way, I think, but it seems like we put a lot of effort into this one, and we've already voted on it. So it seems like we had to just stick with it.
You also, I beg pardon.
I would just like to go on record, who's saying that I do not like this definition, and I prefer the state's definition of canopy, which includes designated area.
It does strike me that if we use this definition of designated area, the 10-foot deal in canopy is not needed. Right? We are already, you may recall, it's what goes into designated area outside the cultivation plots are immature plants and such. And this limits the amount of acreage that can be used for all of that, and plants are not widely scattered, turning 10,000-foot of cultivation into two acres of immature plants. So that was where we landed on this discussion of it, and if we stick with that notion of what, why we have designated area, I don't see a point for the 10-foot spacing.
I would say that we could discuss the 10-foot, that 10-foot when we get to the definition of canopy, and then we'll go through that and just keep it simple for staff's sake with the designated area. Either leave it as is or completely start over. I would, I would say we leave it as it's written in here.
We will, it seems that the commission wants to leave designated area. We did vet this thoroughly last time, so let's move on then to canopy.
Okay. If you could just say the majority of the commission, not the entire commission.
Well, it skips past two, there's two before canopy. Paragraph Q, this was raised in public comment tonight, this is proof of residency. This is the definition of it elsewhere it's applied. And I just want us to consciously state where you think that it's not important that local growers or people here for a year are the ones eligible for the licenses.
I'm sorry, could you repeat, say that again?
I'm just pointing out that this has been deleted from here, and I just wanted us to make a positive statement, either we agree with that or we don't.
I don't agree with that.
You think there should be a one-year requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel, weren't we told at the last meeting that having a residency requirement was unconstitutional?
Yes, it's been removed from the state as well. A residency requirement to open any business is a violation.
Doesn't mean I have to like it.
You don't have to like it.
Okay. The next one would be paragraph, on the new numbering, it's T, the definition of recreational public lands. That's changed to now read high-use public road, including trails, campgrounds, and boating areas. I'm going to have heartache when we get to the setbacks from recreational public lands. But if it's going to stay in as a notion, I think, I don't understand this definition. It's a high-use public road, including trails, campgrounds, and boating areas. I mean, if anyone goes hunting, birding, there's all kinds of use on public lands that aren't on high-use roads. And I'm not sure that, and by the way, recreational public land use can change. And I believe this will come up with permanent variances. So either, I think we have to work on a definition of when it's later referred to as non-recreational public use, or if we delete that notion later on, then it doesn't matter what this definition is. But I think defining recreational public land simply as a high-use public road, including trails, campground, leaves out a whole lot of public use of public land.
I don't know how we can designate any public land non-recreational myself, but that's a pretty difficult definition to come up with for me.
Maybe we put that one on back burner, bring it back up when we get to how it's applied.
Page six, wildlife exclusionary fencing. My question here is, in all of this, all the amendments and rewordings of our ordinance, how did it become wildlife exclusionary fencing? When we started, it was security fencing, it was a lockable gate. And then because of the definitions of security fencing, the only thing I can think of is when it went back to staff, because we wanted to allow more types of fencing rather than cyclone fencing, I think that's how we ended up with the wildlife exclusionary definition, when that wasn't the intent. And when we, when we first put this in the ordinance, it was, it was intended to be security fencing.
So are you suggesting Commissioner Fraser that we change the wording to reflect the security of it?
That would be my take on it, is it needs to, I don't know if it has to say fencing even, it just needs, there needs to be some sort of security measures. Whether this is a egg crop or not, it's still also a controlled substance, so there needs to be some kind of security requirements.
So the applicant will propose a security plan, which could include fencing, motion lights, cameras, whatever. I mean, is that...
I don't know how you would put that in under definitions. I think, I think we would either need to define security fence or just completely strike this and see, and make it security fencing where it calls for wildlife fencing in the, in the ordinance, or security measures, or, but I don't see any reason to have wildlife exclusionary fencing defined.
I agree, that wasn't the purpose, so I'm happy to exclude this paragraph.
I would agree.
I would agree as well.
I do also.
We're on a roll now.
I guess the next one would be now canopy?
Yes.
Can we ask staff to explain how something is...
Yeah, I just want, this is our folder with the cultivation different. I went back and looked at, we have a number of different regulations that have been published by the state. So from the medical cannabis cultivation program, the initial regulations, that's where that definition came from, so it must not have been the updated one. Staff had suggested updating the definition at one time to just say, go with whatever it is that the state has, so we don't have to keep on changing the verbiage every time if the state does change something like that. But it does say, from the medical cannabis regs that came out initially, and they've, since, they've been replaced with the cannabis cultivation program thing that Justin Hawkins handed out. But that's where the 10-feet of open space came from. So it was an obsolete definition.
It makes sense to me to do what you just said, and that is that the definition of canopy is whatever the state's definition is, and just refer to, to that section of the state's regulations.
There's some aspects of the canopy rules that the ad hoc and board have wanted to make sure are emphasized, and so that was a suggestion earlier, but the feedback was to, that they wanted to draw attention to parts of the canopy, state canopy rules, to make sure that they're emphasized within.
And that's all well and good, but make sure you're emphasizing rules that are really there.
Counsel, do you have any suggestions about whether we just echo Paragraph 8000 definitions, or we...
That's really your pleasure. I mean, if you like a definition that differs from the state, then that's clearly within your purview. If you, if your recommendation is to follow the state, that can definitely go forward. I think the ad hoc has created this document and is seeking your input on that.
In my opinion, having a definition of canopy that differs from the state is unreasonably burdensome to the grower.
Do you not believe the ad hoc casting intent in line of diverting from the state, that's again, it's just not a particular important aspect of the canopy rule, is what they're seeking.
So, so basically what we're hearing from staff is that they want to, you want to go with the state definition, but we want it spelled out. We don't want to say, refer to state code.
Particular parts of it.
So we want our, this definition to spell out what's in the state code, rather than just reference state code.
Which, of course, means every time the state changes their definition, we have to change the ordinance, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense either.
Once we get, once the state, I don't think they'll, they'll probably change the whole lot. Once we get, once the state, I don't think they'll probably change the whole lot either with the.
Eventually.
It sounds like our intent is that it follow the state definition. And however the board wants to codify any ordinance is fine. But that's, that's the staple we're making.
Yes.
Yes, that is the statement.
Yes.
As long as it's followed to state and not added conditions such as the 10 feet of open space, or what else, including all the spaces within the boundary, just added verbiage that does not, it's not state.
Well, number one, yeah, number one is not part of the state definition. But number two and four are identical, but three is not. It's just changing the second part of three and eliminating one. I think it was Barbara Kama, counsel, with the style of issues.
Yeah, so we just want. So do we, I think we have consent system, we want to use the state definition.
Yes.
Okay, let's.
Let me have consent system left.
Yes.
All right, let's move on. I guess, section two, application. Just to clarify, if we're moving through this copy, this redlined portion at the bottom here of page six, under section two applications, where it's redlined to add and/or Alma, whichever is greater. It's also kind of messy because Alma, both Mersa and Alma are now superseded by Malcursa. So we should probably call it Malcursa, that's what we mean.
I think that statement is saying that the personal grow rights given under ordinance 797 and the ones given in what was Alma, which is now Malcursa, is what they're referring to. This is the personal grow, non-commercial. So, and I think that should refer to the current state of law, which I think is consistent with the comments.
So change that to Mark Baris, says that.
Malcursa, or, I mean, again, this is something the board can do. Our intent is that it references the personal grow limitations in the regulations. We can tell afterwards, but.
Any other comments in section two application? See, that does not. We'll move on to section three, application requirements.
If there's nothing on section A, application requirement, section three A, we'll move on to section three B, multiple licenses.
A question for staff regarding one of the comments from the public today about water availability. When a license is in place and a subsequent license, or a stacked license, or multiple licenses issued on the same parcel, is a water, is part of that license application proof of water, adequate water availability, including downstream effects and all that? That's part of the sequoia for that grow? Do we know?
That wouldn't be covered, that's not, but.
Your county wouldn't get involved in water availability?
They would have to go through the same thing at each additional site as they have for their initial site, because their water usage, if it's going to change, then that's going to be reflected in what they report to the water board. And depending on the type of diversion that they have, they're going to need to either go through official wildlife, to show that it's surface water diversion, and go through the right channels for that, for a lake or streamhead alteration agreement, or it would be well. So they still have to have, they still have to show that they have storage, that they have production.
They have to show that, and county says?
In the application process with us.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to, a question in light of what Mr. Brower brought up of the sequoia document. Just can we get an update as well, or like where does that stand currently?
We have, right, earlier we were kind of in determination, we could go with mitigating negative deck, or we could go to a full-blown EIR. After careful staff consideration and discussion with council, we made a determination that we were gonna skip that process and go straight to an EIR, match some of the documents that are around here, and a lot of the comments that we've received in the past. That process is being initiated right now, and we're still looking for a, probably release draft, I recall, was in February, March, with the final, going through all the comments and finalizing around the end of the time period. But everything that we see right now has to sync on track to a June 30th completion with the full-blown EIR.
Thank you, Roger.
And one more thing, they will be releasing, we will be putting out an updated, there will be an NLP soon. And we are determined when that's going to be. NLP, notice of preparation.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything about the effects of downstream. When you talked about that, you said, do they have adequate water on their property? But if they use more water and the people below them don't have any, what's the effect? Do you look at that at all?
I, staff, would you like to answer that?
I think I get into a discussion.
Yes, you know, I assume, and of course my assumption, that this will be addressed or included in when the EIR is done. I mean, that's, would be my assumption, since I staff agrees and stuff. So we get that, or what else to say about this?
We also, the drivers have to report and record every gallon of water we use.
There's a forbearance period.
Let's maintain order, please. I appreciate the comments of the public, but let's try to, try to go with this. So anyhow, back to multiple licenses, commissioners?
One general comment, the first paragraph, little low number I, points out that the multiple licenses can't add up to more than one acre. That's how we all read that.
Cannot. Yes, maximum of one acre, yes.
Okay, now, one acre.
That's not taking into account any adjustment for designated area, correct?
It is cultivation area, so designated area is two and a half times cultivation area. Right, so, okay. We have a one-acre license called a type three medium license. It has a bunch of requirements on it, such as a 500-foot setback, and a 50-acre minimum. As we go through this, we should make sure that buying four licenses, each of which are small licenses, at 10,000 feet doesn't add up to a workaround for avoiding the type three requirements. I think that's a, just a philosophical statement I'm making, that I think that this should reflect that. So some discussion of setbacks, we already have a property line setback of 500 feet in the type three licenses. And so therefore, four licenses, getting a 500-foot setback is consistent.
Because type three is under paragraph four, right?
Yep.
I don't see 500 feet in there, so I'm gonna see 50 acres and apply for a use permit. I do not see a 500-foot setback, so where would that be? Is this a change?
All right, I guess I'm working on all data. All right, so let's sit with the 50-acre. A 50-acre minimum then for the type three license, I stand corrected on the 500 foot. I thought that was still in there, that's not.
It is 500 feet, but you're a lot of areas for the type three. That's for first, they have an ordinance.
It looks like 500 foot may have dropped out. I don't see it under cultivation, unless it's under performance requirements or something.
Another point, clarity, the vast staff report didn't include the third cultivation ordinance update from this summer. I don't know if this new working copy design does.
It does. That was the self-transport amendment.
Chairman, may I point out the inclusion of the 500-foot setback? It's on five, limitation on location to cultivate, and then it's a small VIII, which is a little acre, how do you say it? You see it starts off for specialty cotton?
It is, it is still in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so back to my point. It has a 500-foot setback and 50-acre minimum. So as we ramp, ramp the multiple license up to essentially a type three license, I think we should be consistent. And one final comment on that, before we get into setbacks, is little paragraph B, that would be B2B on this page. Multiple cultivation licenses are not allowed in areas identified in section five. I know we're not supposed to talk about numbering, but that numbering is screwed up. So let's just state that that's supposed to refer to the opt-outs.
Well, this was the, yeah, Whiskey Town and Roots Lake Community Service District, but.
That's what it references, but I believe it should reference the next paragraph, which is misnumbered as a second V on that list. Should be VII. Which is the numbering issue, but I guess the point is that I believe that's a reference to the opt-outs, not to the NRA. Cultivation is not allowed in the NRA, so multiple cultivation licenses are obviously not allowed in the NRA. So I believe this refers to the opt-outs, and that number is a reference to the opt-outs, however it gets fixed numbering-wise.
Okay, I do, I have a, C right under that is the same thing as I at the top of the red paragraph. I don't think we need to include that it is, they're only allowed one acre maximum twice in the same paragraph.
Plus it means two of you.
So I would, I would suggest that we do away with C entirely.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
Moving on to the issue of setbacks, I believe, for sake of consistency, and in light of some comments from the public, setback should be tied to neighboring residents.
I agree, yes.
I mean, that is, I mean, there's, if we're, if intent is to mitigate a nuisance, well, it should be based on your neighboring residents, not on the property line. And some comments from the public, if your closest neighbor is a mile away, what's the point of?
Yeah, there is no nuisance value when your neighbor is that far away.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think the question is, if you're potentially depriving somebody of making a nuisance of their property, if they can't use their property because the owner bothers them so much, why is it just their house? If they can't, you know, if they're allergic to it, you're basically saying that you can, part of, and this is the argument before.
You're allowing, you're allowing use of your neighbor's property.
Property, and so you're already affecting everything from the property line out to the house. Talking about the house, good. Now, I think we, we decided in the past that that's where people spent enough of their time, or where the impacts would be, when people want to go through their windows and try to go to sleep, and all those kind of things. And that's where the nuisance would be concentrated. You know, I think you easily make an argument that it should start at the property value. I agree, it's much harder to have a number then, because there's all these special cases out there that it shouldn't apply to at all. I mean, either we have that as part of the variance process, and people come in and say, look, I don't have any neighbors. I shouldn't have any setback requirement, it's a variance process. Or we.
Well, the thing is, we already have the 350-foot variance, not, excuse me, setback from the residents. And why are we changing it here to the property line? That does not make any sense to me.
We also have a property line setback for the type three.
But for the most, for most of it, for most licenses, it's the residents. I don't understand why we have, why we have a 500-foot setback from the property line for type three.
I think for the reason Commissioner Matthews just pointed out.
No, I.
But one thing about the setbacks, the license here is.
I agree with it.
Two licenses is 350 feet. I don't think it should be tied to the number of licenses, I think it should be tied to the size of the grow.
Absolutely.
So if you have two 2,500-foot licenses and now you have 5,000, nothing. I believe that, I think these numbers should be changed now from two licenses to something like no setback other than a 350-foot for a 10,000, up to 10,000. And then we could do something at 20, 30, and 40, and 40 ought to match the type three, I think.
With American.
And I don't see why variances would be not allowed.
Yes, I agree. It should be tied into the size of cultivation and not to the number of licenses.
So the last time we brought this up, we specifically eliminated all of these setbacks.
Right, we did.
In, in, I, no, I mean.
In those three ag zone parcels, and we said, everything else has to get a conditional use permit. For annual directors, right?
We said, yeah, conditional use permit.
I just wanted, what has changed in our opinion? My opinion hasn't really changed since then.
Mine has. I think, I don't think, I don't have a good excuse for why I went along with that, other than we were tired of that. But I do, I think, I was focused, as I think counsel was, on the 350. You asked the question twice, do you mean the 350-foot setbacks are still in, dwelling setbacks are still in? For the reason Commissioner Matthews just outlined, I think the property line setbacks are reasonable. Because now we're not talking about the small grows, the 10,000-foot grows, now we're stacking them up. You have now here the 20, 30,000-foot grows with the larger impacts. We recognize it in the type threes with the 500-foot setback. And in fact, it has a minimum acreage, we could say, we could put minimum acreages on the over 10,000 ones as well. But this spreadsheet that was handed out shows an example of that in the bottom there. I'm not sure we go that route and put two different requirements on minimum acreage, although it's there. The 50-acre one is there because that matches the type three, and I think we should be consistent. I don't think that this mechanism is a way to get around getting a type three license and complying with the requirements of the type three license.
I would agree with that. I do think that the setbacks need to be tied to the size. I do think that the, that the setbacks need to be tied to the sizes of grow, not the number of grows. But then, with the variances, the only issue, where it says, "No setback variances shall be allowed," I would say that it should say, "No multiple licenses shall be allowed if they're going to require a variance." That would be a lot cleaner than saying you can't apply for a variance. I don't think you should be able to stack that license if that would require a variance.
What if it's non-residential land, like wilderness around us?
What about increasing the setback to the residences?
There are risks of that, please. Thank you. Well, firstly, I'd like to see the setbacks reduced for 350 feet of property for a 20,000. That seems, seems large. And then if we're going to allow variances by reducing, if, if, if the conversation goes that way, by reducing the amount, the setback amounts, they would eliminate more variances, more variance, more need for us to visit these variances.
I would, I would support a decrease in that 350 feet from the property line if we put a number, a size limit rather than a number of grows limit on that. If we limit that to 20,000 feet, I would, I would, I would be in favor of lowering that from the property line. 350 feet is quite a ways from the property line. The other question I have though would be, I assume they would still be required to maintain the 350 feet to a residence also, but it doesn't, I don't see that in this part of the ordinance, but it would already, should already be required in the other parts.
I think it is.
No, it just, it just doesn't, to me, it just doesn't make any sense because you already have to be 350 feet from, from the residence. Obviously, if you're 350 feet from the property line, you're going to be way over.
That's why I said, I'm, I'm in favor of reducing that for, for the smaller size. Once we get up to a 40,000 foot size grow, then I, I do agree with Commissioner McHugh that we need to leave it at 500 feet so it's, it doesn't become a way around getting a type three license if you want to have that size grow.
I can see that.
So what I'm hearing basically is change to size of grow 20,000, 30,000, 40,000 square feet, leaving the 40,000 square feet at a 500 feet and the possibility of reducing to 20,000 and 30,000, is that correct? Commissioners?
How does that reduce the nuisance to?
And then?
Can't use your property, own your house?
Then, so if we, then the question, then this question will become, what is the magic number from the property line? And we've yet to determine that in all of our, all of our discussions on this ordinance.
Well, this sheet proposes 200 for 20,000, 350 for 30,000, 500 for 40,000. Those are, or maybe 200, 300, 500. Those are, and this shows you the size of the acreage. This is a simplification. This doesn't take into account mountainous terrain. This is a square, these numbers must be derived from a square plot inside a square parcel, but 200 would, 200, 300, it would be 10 acres. 200 would be, 300 would be 17 acres. 50, something like 200, 300, 500.
I mean, we're, we're hinging these, all these numbers all on the fact that the type three license has been set with a 500 foot setback. Right, that's already in there. So now we're just saying, I guess I just have a question. I mean, what other use would, would only allow you to use 2% of your, of your land?
Yeah.
That's, that's a pretty onerous restriction.
It is.
I mean, one acre and 50, so that's 2%. You're only allowed to, to do something at 2% of your land. And can you think of any other agricultural operation that would be restricted to that small portion of their land? So I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm not convinced that the 500 feet, the 50 acres is really the appropriate goal point, goalpost on this end.
And I, I agree with you.
100, 200, 300?
First of all, as you pointed out, the 40,000 one also had, ought to have a 50 acre tied to it because the type three has the 50.
Sometimes that's what this example has, but...
I think this is reverse engineered from the type three.
I mean, 40,000 is pretty close to an acre, right?
Yeah.
So then 3,000, 40 feet.
Very 500.
You also have to take into account, we can't just move gardens and develop sites because we're allowed one acreage of growth every five years.
I hear only one side. What about the owner of the properties who wants to use all these properties?
Exactly. It's here.
Well, I would suggest that we go, numbers 1, 2, 3 aren't 2, 3, 4 licenses, they're 20, 30, 40 K at 40 feet, at 200, 300, 500, and the four licenses, and at 40,000 feet, you got to be at 50 acres, and that matches the type three. These are net new licenses for someone who presumably has a single small license, 10,000. And then I would also say we delete paragraph E. Those would make my changes there.
Why, why would you delete E?
Because E says no setback variances are allowed.
Yeah, so you're saying the variances wouldn't be allowed.
Wouldn't be allowed.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, absolutely. The variances should be allowed.
Commissioner Fraser, any comments on the variances?
I already made my comments on that. I don't think it should, I don't think that we should tell people no variances are allowed. I just think that it would be better if we did stat, tried to deal with that with the licensing of multiple.
We are in consensus on that, the variances will be allowed.
Yes.
Yes.
Strike in paragraph E completely.
So, how do we want to go with our, this proposed setback issue? Do we, do we want to have a consensus type vote on what Commissioner McHugh suggested and see if we reach an agreement, or do we, how are we going to move forward?
I personally don't like the two, three, and five. I would rather see it one, two, and three. 100 from the property line and 350 from the nearest residence.
For the 20,000?
For the 20,000.
So 100, 200, and 300?
Yeah. That, that to me makes more sense.
If you're a grower.
Mr. Chair, just as a point of order, if we keep having comments, we're, we're going to have to take a recess. It is permitting certain people have public comment while others aren't, so we're going to have to request order.
Thank you. Did members of the public, everyone here, what council said? I, I, I agree. I would like to see 100, 200, and 300 foot variances, 300, 400, 500, that's just, seems like over the top. And yes, I'd like, it would be good to have it tied to the size, 20,000, 30,000, 40,000 square.
I, I like it being tied to the size and not the number.
So I just want to clarify, when, when we started the discussion, there was a discussion of whether D was going to stay in, and now there's a discussion of setbacks as they apply in this section. Is that assuming D remaining or assuming?
Oh, it was, it was, it was C that we struck because it was redundant to I.
There was a discussion about the setback from the property lines? Are we still discussing these setbacks being from the property line and not a residence?
Yes.
Yeah, I still maintain that the 40,000 has to be 500 feet to be consistent with the type three license.
There's a difference between a one acre that, if, if you have 600 acres and you have four grows that are spread pretty far apart, that's very different from one acre that is continuous, or you know, in, in a contained area.
Except that we just defined canopy to mean that canopy's canopy, right? You can spread it all over. It's a designated area.
We're, we're talking, we're not talking about one designated area. We're talking about multiple designated areas, and they can be spread out with multiple licenses. We're talking about multiple licenses, not just one license for one area.
I guess we need to come to an agreement with the setbacks. It seems like we're in agreement with anything else for the specific number of the setback.
I would, I would be in agreement with 100, 200, but I do agree with Commissioner McHugh that we need to leave it at 500 for the, for the, for the 40,000 plus. So I would, I would say 100, 200 for the smaller ones, that's, that would be okay. But I think we need to leave the, the large one so it's in line with the type three grow.
Point of order for county council, if you're stacking grows and you have one garden with already licensed, do these setbacks, do these setbacks apply to your original license? It already needs to exist in the gross space.
These are only for new permits.
License.
New licenses.
So I would go along with that, 100, 200, 500.
Number 200, 500.
I still feel 100, 200, 300.
You're a favor of Commissioner Fraser?
I'm, I'm...
Commissioners, so I, I think on the other issues, you were, you were fairly in agreement across the board because this issue seems to be divided. I think it would be best to make a motion, try to decide what this section would be so we have a clear record, and then when we complete, we can go back through the, the points that you agreed on consistently through the five of you, adding the sections where there's disagreement, having a motion and accepting it, and then we can go back to the documents and make sure the changes are all noted.
Okay, so you want us to do a motion now on this?
On this subject because the board seems, the commission seems to be divided, I think, for clarity of the record. You're not all in agreement, so I think we need a motion.
Okay, I, I'm going to move that B, D, yes, read setbacks of 100 feet from the property line for a 20,000 foot total, for total growing area containing two licenses, 200 from the property line for three licenses with a maximum acreage or square foot of 30,000, and 300 from the property line with four licenses or more with 40,000.
There's a motion presented. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, I'm going, I'll take a stab at this. I will move that we, that B, I, I, D say setback from property lines shall be 100 feet for 20,000 square feet, 200 feet for 30,000 square feet, or 500 feet for 40,000 square feet.
A second. Is the motion, it was a second, further discussion?
Yeah, it can't just say the number of square feet has to, this is discussing multiple licenses. You have to put in...
This is under, under multiple licenses though, so it doesn't matter if they have five licenses. If it's 20,000 square feet, it's still only...
Okay, so, so you're not, you're, you're not caring about the number of licenses?
Only the size.
Okay.
Those in favor of further discussion, commissioners, before we vote on the motion presented?
I mean, the only thing I'd say is the math doesn't make sense to me. You're allowed 30,000, that's three quarters of 40,000, but your setback is less than half.
You're right. It ought to be 300.
If, if, if the issue is nuisance from odor, then it should be a linear function.
Amen. It's hard to make a competing one.
We'll make another motion that makes sense to you.
Is there a competing motion? I mean, that there's not, we will vote on the motion presented by Commissioner Fraser. Those in favor of the motion presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Back to square one. Motion fails on the three to two vote.
100, 200, 350.
Excuse me, what is this?
Yes. Yes, we're going to, being that it's almost 9:00 PM, we're going to take a short break. It's 8:50, we will reconvene at 9:00 PM. Members of the public who's interested in attending the rest of the meeting, please take a seat at your pleasure, or 9:00 years old, not having a reception, I'm sorry. Is, we, planning permission is back in session. And we are back to the setback argument.
Well, just to be different, I will make a motion that we strike B two, D, and E, and replace it with the motion that we unanimously agreed on in our last meeting, that we allow multiple licenses on ag, ag forest, and ag preserve with only the normal setbacks, and any other zoning would be required conditional use permit. any other zoning would require conditional use permit.
Now, for clarity's sake, you have to figure out how to define normal setback.
350 foot to a residence.
I'll second that.
There is a motion, and there is a second. Is any further discussion?
Just to be obstinate, I guess I'll offer a competing motion, kind of split the difference between, and say that item B, I, I, D would say setbacks from property lines shall be 100 feet for grows up to 20,000 square feet, 250 feet for grows up to 30,000 square feet, and 500 feet for grows 40,000 square feet.
There's a competing motion. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
There's a second. Further discussion, commissioners? We will vote on the motion that was, the competing motion that last one presented. Those in favor of the motion presented by Commissioner Fraser?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails three to two. Back to the motion presented by Commissioner Matthews. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay. Motion carries three to two.
For the sake of parody, can we have, make sure we repeat that motion?
Commissioner Matthews?
Commissioner Matthews, would you like to?
Well, it was basically said that multiple licenses will be allowed on ag, ag forest, and ag preserve with only a normal 350-foot setback to a residence. Any other zoning would require a conditional use permit. Basically what we adopted at the October 25th meeting.
Are there any other comments regarding Section 3 as we proceed down the ordinance?
The next page is still reading.
Yes.
We would have to fix I, I, I.
So I, I would have to be amended to, to reflect the motion that.
Or eliminate. There's no square footage anymore.
You could eliminate it.
There's definitely square footage.
Yeah, eliminating that would work.
Well, not with his motion.
Well, there's no setback type square footage, but there's square footage. It says up to 30,000 feet.
But with his motion, all on, all would require a conditional use permit except on ag forest, ag preserve, and.
Is that what your motion was?
Yeah, so anything not zoned ag would require a conditional use permit. So the only, we would have to determine whether we're gonna keep C as it is or if we're gonna require use permits on ag zoned parcels. If we don't want to require a use permit on ag zoned parcels, we can strike that entire section.
I think we should require the use permits because specifically we eliminated the setback.
If you're, if you're, the motion that you have just agreed on does require conditional use permits on all zoning other than ag, so the portion of this that says use permits are not required for that zoning portion would be consistent. So Section I, 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 D.
Minus O, D.
Actually, if I, if I may, maybe it's, if I may, maybe it was, I'm running it by county or county councils, Ritter doesn't have the vote, the intent of vote striking D and E and just making the Section I, I, I what governs the permit. So essentially, we have, because it says in here that Section C, you don't require a, a permit for ag, ag preserve, and ag forest, which is what the intent of motion was. And essentially, you remove the square footage off of B, and then you have what the motion was. So we could have permit required just A, or B and C, that all multiple licenses over 20,000, or, or all multiple licenses require a conditional use permit, where C is just, if you have A, you can take preserve and ag forest, then you don't need a permit.
The point, of course, is that if you live next to land that is zoned ag, you expect ag uses on that land. And that was my impression of your intent to make that motion originally at our last meeting, was that that, you don't need any additional setbacks because.
It's ag.
Ag land, and this is an ag use, and that's an appropriate use for that type of land. I mean, even the 350 feet is probably excessive. It's easy to go along with that one. I mean, what my motion didn't say is whether there was a difference anywhere with the direct use permit. Basically, it just said, no permits, what my intent was, no permits for ag zoned parcels and conditional use permits for anything else. That that would basically, you don't need any of this in there. You just include that one.
Seems to be, that is dumb, so we just, we can strike that.
Except for this, except for C.
Well, you, you wouldn't. What, I think what Director Tippett was saying was that if we, that's basically what his motion says, is if you take out the 30,000 square feet, it says all multiple licenses would require a conditional use permit, and use permits are not required on ag. So you could, instead of amending the section before with his, with his motion, we could just do away with the section before and use B and C from this to cover what Commissioner Matthews said. Does that, does that work for you? If you take out the 30,000 square feet, does that look like your motion?
Is there consensus in favor of that?
Yes, that's fine.
Commissioner McHugh?
Yes.
Okay. We have consensus on that. Let's keep going forward then.
Just sort of visual of what we're proposing to be consistent with your motion to strike.
Should be all multiple licenses require a conditional use permit, right? Not resulting in combined violation, right? Just you eliminate that part of the two. All multiple licenses require a conditional use permit, but use permits are not required for ag zoned parcels.
Yeah, ag zones are similar, yeah.
And we were gonna strike D too because.
Paragraph F. I think this is the time to introduce the notion of no transfers and opt-outs. I think that's a compromise for the folks in opt-outs, giving up some opt-outs, and now giving up setbacks a lot. The notion of the opt-outs has been, they're not growing areas, they're marijuana-free. Of course, they're not. We've grandfathered in any number of licenses. And the way ultimately have them work towards becoming that goal of the people that stood up and commented tonight in Bucktail and throughout at least District One, those opt-outs, is that eventually they would like those grandfathered ones to go away when those growers are no longer growing. And I think a way to ultimately achieve the no growing in the opt-outs is to say you can't transfer a license. As long as you're there growing, you're fine. You can transfer a license out of the opt-out, and I believe with multiple licenses, those will have value now because we will undoubtedly hit the 500 limit. Therefore, they take on value. And you can transfer them out, but you can't transfer them in or within in the opt-out. So I think this is the time to introduce that.
I'm totally supportive of the concept.
It's fine.
Okay, I will, do you need a motion on this?
If you guys are in full unanimous agreement, you can make that change. And then what we'll do at the end here is reflect what all the changes are, including those that required motions.
Okay, so the, I don't have the verbiage figured out yet, but the verb, the intent is, the paragraph F says you can do all this transferring, except you cannot transfer a license into or within an opt-out area. You can transfer it out of the opt-out area, that's fine. And I don't really exactly where you can make that effective, but.
Just added that.
Could have just, but just said.
Add that as B at the bottom.
Okay.
Just refer to I, A, B, I, I.
Well, it's the, it's the numbering problem, yeah. It should reference that funding number one, which was identified as the opt, the remaining opt-out. I think paragraph G was something we didn't discuss last time, and they're asking us to look at this dwelling issue. Is that true, Stan? Was this the one we missed?
My question on this one is, what is the definition of a legal dwelling?
It's out there. It's not under there.
No, it's not. You know, it's, because at one time, I remember, they defined a legal dwelling as something that, and I'm looking for it, that was permitted, it was permitted, it was constructed before 1972 or permitted thereafter on a parcel. So it was a dwelling unit that had been permitted in the house, house intended for someone.
Well, under, under 6Q, it says that a person shall not be denied a license for the following reasons. The property has an unlicensed structure without plumbing or electricity. If the structure is less than 120 square floor feet, or the property was an unoccupied outbuilding without plumbing or electricity, if the building was retired in 2001.
I think that's the. That's not referring to dwellings.
Yeah.
I think this, no, this, this says that if you built a barn, and you predate that date, 19 whatever it is, 77, you're not gonna get busted because you own a permitted barn. Whereas, issues have come up, to be compliant, in order to get an application through, not only do you have to have a legal dwelling, but all the other stuff has to be permitted. That's what this is saying. Those won't hold you back.
Not the people who are living in these.
Right.
Yeah, I believe 72 was when our county licensing programs stood up. And so they, they have since identified pre-72 homes. And through a tax bill, and so if not the tax bill, it doesn't show up on Google Earth. And now it does. Yeah, it has to.
So you're saying legal dwelling for our purposes is pre-1972 or a permitted dwelling? Something permitted for residency. Home office, build, RO, zoning, all that counts. If it's allowed to have an apartment on it, it's a legal dwelling.
If you have commercial par, I'm just using this as an example. You have commercial properties that have commercial buildings on it, you have to get a use permit to have the 25% residential dwelling unit on the property that's on commercial property. That, if you go and get that use permit, you get that permitted, then you have a legal dwelling.
Mm-hmm. So any sort of legal dwelling of the spirit?
Of housing.
Okay.
The date, the date is actually July 1st of 1973. That's when we adopted the building code.
Okay, so basic, so basically, anything that is, is on the tax rolls currently would be a legal dwelling?
No.
Not necessarily.
There's post-72 homes on there that are not technically legal, but the tax collector sees them, and they want to make sure they declare their taxes.
Well, but for instance, there might be a case where there's a garage, not that I happen to know about one, that is, it got a variance, so that garage was built on a parcel legally permitted. It's a garage, and someone's living in it. It's not a legal dwelling.
No. If that's a non-salaried building, and you'd have to get variance, build a non-salaried building prior to the primary structure.
And if that variance were obtained, it's all above board, but you can't live in it.
Can't live in it. So we need to add the definition of legal dwelling in the definition section. Seems like.
Seems like we should make it cleaner.
I think Stan can handle that one. So the real issue, obviously, is this quarter mile, just a camp parcel speed. They have to be contiguous or can they be separated by some distance? And to me, it gets down to the security issue. If you can't oversee what's happening, you've got a really valuable agricultural crop there, a quarter mile away, you can't see what somebody's doing. So maybe if you had an appropriate security plan, I don't know, if you had power and cameras and something like that, maybe that would satisfy. But it seems like, if we're concerned enough about having security fencing.
So the inference I'm taking is that because there's a legal dwelling, you're inferring that the cultivator lives there?
Or has someone that is there.
We don't actually require it.
No. But that provides some level of security that a house, I mean, it definitely would dissuade some people if they saw lights on in a house. They may not choose to go into that garden and move a plant worth the next $1,000.
But there are people who have a house and a yard, and then some distance away have another property that they are able to grow on. And I kind of feel like if they want to take the chance to put a fence around it, they do all the stuff they're supposed to do. Then it's, it's up to them. They can put in cameras, they can monitor it, you know, on their telephone, wherever they are, if they want, the way, the way it goes. I mean, you know, that's not. I think, I think we need to, I think it's important that people be, especially if I think, I think we need to, I think it's important that people be, especially if they're doing multiple licenses, that they not have to have two houses and, you know, one night they're here and another they're there. I mean, you know, that doesn't make any sense.
I was just going to share with you the intent of the ad hoc was exactly that, that it would be time to split this now, multiple licenses, that they would have license on their property, say, license on one and that's across the street. And it was, well, do we want to have and build two houses where one might never necessarily be...
Exactly.
So that's why it was within a quarter mile was the determination that that's within a reasonable quick walk or, you know, bicycle ride to get to that other property. And they wouldn't be able to set up a tent and have occupancy on that other building. If they wanted to do that, they would have to build something or install some sort of...
Right.
But remember, we don't actually require the grower to live in that dwelling. It's got to be there. Right? Do you? As the people enforcing the application?
Not required.
So it's not required. So that's even worse to say you got to build a dwelling, it'll stand empty, now you got to build two. I think the quarter mile thing is fine, Lance Dan, in my opinion.
I really don't think that a quarter of a mile is going to make that much of a difference. If somebody owns a property right across the street and they want to grow on it, it's going to be a contiguous parcel. If it's a quarter of a mile away, I don't see that happening a lot in Trinity County. There's, a quarter of a mile is not very far. And most, most properties are going to be outside that. So I really don't, I don't care either way with this one. I don't, I think it's a non-issue myself.
I have somebody who is growing, who is about half a mile from me. And they bought a parcel at auction recently that's within a quarter of a mile of them that they plan on growing on as well. And quite frankly, I'm just as glad because there's a derelict building on it that I'm sure they will tear down and it will look a lot better. So I have no issue with the quarter mile.
As I said before, I think it comes down to security. And if we're going to require or are concerned about the security fencing, something that's within your current parcel and under your view, and we want to require people to secure their grow area. And now it just doesn't make any sense to me to have something that a quarter mile could be, you could have, hear nothing, see nothing, I mean, with the trees and the curves in the road and all that kind of stuff. You would have no idea what's going on in that parcel. So if we're going to go that route, why would we have any security on the parcel to begin with?
I didn't, I don't agree with the security fencing, so I'm fine with it.
We said security, not security fencing. You can, there's all kinds of places that are secured. I don't want to live there.
And I would, I would rather see a security requirement than a resident, a legal dwelling on the parcels that existing grows. I, that's one thing I'm not really in favor of is requiring that somebody live on or have a legal dwelling on their property to grow. Security is one thing, but if you own a piece of bag land, you should be able to grow ag crops on it. Or if you have it, if you own an ag forest, you don't have to have a house on it to log. I don't really think that you should have to have a house on your property to use your property. So I'm, I'm more inclined to go with, yeah, I think we should have security measures. But a residency requirement, and especially with the quarter mile, I don't think it's going to be a big issue. I don't think it's going to come up that often.
The bottom line is we don't have to be unanimous. It sounds like there are enough of us that it, that they can spot me.
That's true. That's true. So it seems like we have the consensus of that. Let's move on.
It's not too contentious anyway.
So moving on to section four, which now re-typed, recultivation licenses.
I just want to, I just want to confirm that the consensus was add a definition for a legal parcel and to accept the track changes, legal dwelling, and to accept the track changes as they exist here.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. So section four, type three cultivation licenses.
I have a question for staff on this one. Under four B, Roman number two, on July 1st, the director may increase the number of licenses, type threes to 30, if the environmental documents support this increase. What environmental documents might support the increase?
EIR, it's going to be done.
There's all kinds of things that could change when the EIR comes out. I'm just curious about this one's called out.
It was out with the intent of environmental document. It's got out, but there was some quote about that.
So if the environmental document says we really ought to have setbacks, then we got to re-use it down. There's all kinds of things that could change when the EIR comes out. I just thought it was interesting. I thought it made it amazing, something unique about this one. Okay. Withdraw the question.
Any other comments on section four? So I do have a comment on, I guess it would be B four, B I one. So for a type three license, it says B applying for a property that is 50 acres or more. How about adding an exemption for ag, ag forests and ag reserves that not have that 50 acre requirement? As we discussed before, in light of the motion that was presented, it's ag land. Why, why have that requirement for ag land?
I'll agree with that.
Wow. I don't. But then I didn't agree with the other change that we tried to be consistent with now. I think it's a mitigation.
Any other comments, commissioners, or...
So I guess one of the first, should we try to resolve this one? It sounds like we might have disagreed, so we should probably have a motion on this. But a question, so that if I was going to make a motion. On the first paragraph, under four A, the 30 of those licenses shall be within Trinity County Water Works District number one. That's not constrained at all now, right?
No.
That was only when it was like sort of a partial opt-out, limbo area?
Right, yeah.
I mean, is there any constraint on the number of permits?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make any, I was looking at that too.
It's been struck from the...
They tried, they tried to resolve it by saying this priority will be issued based on the number issued to a Trinity County Commercial Cannabis License number. I don't even understand what that sentence means. And so I think that, that that whole A just needs to be struck.
Well, you could leave the first sentence.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Well, maybe it should be 500.
530 licenses.
We're at 382-ish. We never got to 500. We added 30 because the opt-out came in, you know, I think the supervisor down there said that when we relaxed the opt-out for someone, had the 500 been used up, relaxing it would have screwed those people. So then we'll give 30 more licenses. Well, now we don't need the 30 more licenses.
Yeah, but, but they...
Okay, okay. Just remember this.
I think that we just need to remove the whole part about the Trinity Water Works District and that I after it. And then just leave it at the county will allow a total of 530 licenses.
My question would be, why, why is that under type three cultivation? Why, why does it say we're allowing 530 licenses when we're talking about type three cultivation licenses? But...
Yeah.
That shouldn't even be in there. It should say 15.
Yeah.
A completely gets removed and it's in the wrong...
It is in the wrong spot. You're right, you're right.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, A needs to be stated somewhere.
But not under type three.
But not, not under type three.
I think the mistake was renaming that type three cultivation license.
It should be under...
I think it's, yeah, licensing phases or numbers of licenses available or something like that. If you rename that paragraph to that, then A and B both make sense to be there. And A, A needs to be somewhere.
Can we just say that, that staff will make this look like it should and... Because this just doesn't make sense. Because I think we're getting, we're getting sucked into minutia and, and we need to kind of move on.
Staff understands the issue and will correct it to read accordingly. What I need to know is if you want to change any of the parameters of going to different numbers, it doesn't sound like it. So we'll consider and make sure it's correct.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Except we're going to address 50 acres, right?
Yes, I would like to address the 50 acres and with the exception of ag, ag forests. Mr., is there any comments on that?
I'll make a motion to amend for, I don't know what number it will be, B I one to say B applying for properties that is 50 acres or more, except if it is owned ag, ag forest or ag reserve.
I'll second.
Further discussion, commissioners?
Bad idea.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll take a vote on this then. Those in favor of the motion presented by Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions?
I don't even know. I'm worried about that one.
We'll take that as an abstain...
Abstention, sure.
So motion carries.
Three to one.
Three to one. With one abstention. Moving on. Any other issues on section four? Moving on to section five, limitation on location to cultivate cannabis.
I guess we're down to the last paragraph on the lifetime variances.
I don't understand how lifetime variances can be applied to an annually renewable license. The zoning next door could change. The TPZ could be pulled out, taxes paid, and an R1 subdivision could be put in there. I think lifetime is a long time. And that, you know, these go, these go into the planning department. They don't come back to the planning commission. And the purpose of the renewal of them is for the planning director to look at it and say, nothing's changed, good to go. Or if something's changed, we better look at it. But he doesn't get that option if it's lifetime. I don't understand the lifetime for any zoning next door.
And I really don't see how we can classify any recrea, any public land, non-recreational. Somebody's using the public land for recreation everywhere. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't think you can put that designation on there.
So we should strike that sentence out altogether?
I would.
I don't agree with that.
Commissioner Matthews, Commissioner Stewart, any comments about?
You know, on the surface, it sounds wonderful. There's, it's just vacant land, but... But there, but things change. Is it possible to make it instead of lifetime? Like, can you, can it be like a five-year variance or something? So it's not necessarily coming back every year? Or, or after, after one variance, that it, that it becomes the director's use permit or...
It's already in the director's...
Yes, application, but I'm talking about a lifetime variance.
So the minimum...
I know that.
Time frame to take something out of TPZ, so...
Is a month, if you're willing to pay the taxes.
If you're willing to pay taxes, so. That's the 10, 10 years to forego the tax consequences. And you could do that. I don't think very many people are going to be willing to pay.
That's on the housing market.
It could be something like five or 10 years, but lifetime is obviously too long.
Well, again, what we're talking about is every year when that license is reviewed by the staff, should we review all the on this license, the variances in there? And they look at it and say, nothing's changed, check. I don't see that that, it gives the staff the opportunity to say, whoa, somebody built something there and now we better take a look at it.
So, so you're saying don't, just don't do it automatically at all, just make it a director's use permit?
No, you direct me use permit. It's just part of the application.
Well, that's what it says right here.
It's a, after using the initial variance, the plan director can issue a director's use permit for subsequent years.
Okay, absolutely, that's it. I think it's just part of the, is it, how does it work today? If someone gets a variance for a cultivation plot today, what happens next year?
They get a director's use permit. But what a director's use permit allows us to do is allows us to send out for public comment houses that are within 350 feet of that property that might be affected by it. And so if someone, one year is okay with it, the next year they're not, then what would happen is if I would not likely issue a director's use permit, I would say this needs to hit or go in front of the commission for some sort of action. So it's a, it's a way to allow people, you know, that are being...
Neighbor, neighbors to be concerned about impact.
Yeah. I mean, it might be a situation where I don't have a problem, but now I have a kid and now it's blown through the window. I want something done about it. They, you know, the 350-foot setback might not have been a concern a year before, but now it is. And so that was, again, you go back to the 350-foot is a variance. We're given a special permission for somebody to do something. Conditions could change to remove that special condition. And so that was why it was only for an annual period.
But we're talking, here we're talking about properties that don't have anybody that's close enough to be noticed. And...
That's not true. There's a parcel next door. I mean, you have a variance. That's why you got to get a variance because there's another parcel next door.
Okay. But, but it...
It's not getting right, just that, except that it's a case...
Then none of that makes any sense. If it was... Okay, so what is the intent of this then? You're, you're right, we got a variance in the first place. And so that means somebody had to have been noticed there, there was, because otherwise it wouldn't have come to us at all. And so...
Variances are usually without limits, maybe as variances are. The decision was made earlier that the variances for cannabis that were within 350 feet of a residential property would be reviewed annually.
Okay, but that's, that's...
That's what this is saying is that on these particular situations, that review will not happen.
But, but that's, that's the thing. If we had to, if we had to issue a variance in the first place, then...
There was a residence.
There was a reason.
Then there was somebody that was affected. And so what difference does proximity to non-recreational public lands and... Non-recreational public lands and TPZ lands have, have to do with it?
Yeah, I think the variance was
A type three
On property law.
A type three license requires a setback from a property law.
That's the only one.
So, we're
So, that would
So, this would only be for type three licenses.
I believe it was only to, intended to apply to property lines.
Well, and when this was drafted, we had setbacks on property lines for stacked licenses. Those seemed to have gone away, so like
Now, it would only be for a type three license.
And a type three license who got a variance?
Yeah, and a type three license that got a variance, which meant that there was an issue.
There was an issue.
They wouldn't have needed a variance.
So, I Which is under one.
I think we should just strike the red.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
Strike the red. Seems like we're all in agreement with that.
Okay, moving on to the next section, section six, performance standards for commercial cultivation cannabis.
Alma needs to be removed here and changed.
Say again, Commissioner?
Under six A, Alma needs to be corrected.
Okay. Noted, six A at the end and or Alma, that needs to be corrected. Any other comments?
Six E.
Six E.
Whole thing, yeah, we fixed.
Back to the wildlife fencing.
We get away with the definition of wildlife exclusionary fencing, so we need to change the this to either security fencing or a security plan, something. Security oriented, not wildlife oriented.
Well, I've been very vocal about being completely against the fencing. Birds are so, it's expensive, but it's just unnecessary. I would be more in favor to allowing cultivators to come up with their own
Security plan.
Security measure. I mean, this is their cultivation, this is their investment. I mean, why, why do I have to dictate how they protect it, you know, or whatnot?
It's also the other way, protecting youth.
That's, that's true. Nonetheless, um, we, we did take a vote to eliminate fencing and it failed on our last meeting regarding this. Unless we take another motion to it, I'm pleased as a commission to change the name to reflect security, so wildlife, that's fine. Well, let's, let's just go with the secured, the applicant must submit a security plan.
Yes, I like that.
I'm in favor of that. If that entails a fence, then that
Whatever they're comfortable with. Why is that security? We should something similar.
Cannabis grown up or shall we contain in a secure location? I mean, how are you gonna, how are you gonna read this or write this?
There's a verbiage under manufacturing, manufacturing ordinance that says, and this wouldn't be exactly right, but this says, "Security plan shall be developed which is compliant with state requirements." I don't know if we have that here. Maybe we do. And submitted with an application and must be sufficient to restrict access to only those intended to deter trespass and theft of cannabis, cannabis products shall be provided and maintained. Something like that.
I, I completely agree with, with that.
And this says, "Security plan shall be approved by the board supervisors."
Or we can
Wait, not wanna go there.
We can strike that part, but leave it up to the inspector or the director.
Or the, or the district. Let's not leave anything away. I mean, it's either you required for parcel, you know, grows on much smaller parcels that are, that have more potential for trespass and theft issues.
Wild, like
Can exclude, well, no, I, I think we're definitely
Well, but, but, but how this is written though, it, um, it wasn't required on the small parcels. As long as it was contained, contained within a fence. Uh, there had, if, if, for type one C, fencing is not required when there's a perimeter fence. You didn't have to have a fence around the grow as long as there was security. So, um, the, I think the, the main issue is security. And so, if we can address that without fencing, I have no problem with it.
You have an arm guard?
You can't have arms.
It could be outside the fence.
However, however you come up with a security plan, I'm, I'm fine with it as long as we put security in there somewhere.
I, I like the, um, I like, I hate the fencing. I like the, um, the cannabis grown out, in, in order to get your license, cannabis grown outdoors, you must submit a security plan.
Seems like we're all in agreement.
And they have examples in the other ordinance. No further words.
Okay, excellent.
We'll recommend that.
I'd require a security cert, we've asked you, okay? This is insane. You can't cite state laws and then, oh my God.
Get the fuck out of here.
If he comes back, we'll have to share a So, just so we're clear, if your intent is to use the language from the other ordinance, we can do that. That's fine. But I think at this point, because you, all of you have discussed something separate, I think it would require a motion.
Commissioner McQ, since you spearheaded the idea, perhaps you
He's spearheaded it. I don't have that, I don't have that wording in front of me, you know, so, go ahead.
Point of order. I think this might be a point of order. If we're introducing something at like a completely new requirement, like a security plan, shouldn't that be noticed ahead of time so people can come, comment on it? It's a big change.
It is a big change.
I mean, on one hand, most people are saying, well, I have a perimeter fence and I have a gate on it that satisfies the security needs that I see. No. You know, it's, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't say that it's gonna be an onerous requirement.
Yeah, if I understand requirement, if they choose to have fencing, it would be this, just build the fence that was required before we took away the fence requirement and said you could do other things in lieu of fence. So, I, I don't think it's really a major change. It's
Any thoughts, Stewart?
Well, I, I think that essentially it's addressing security, which the fence was addressing. So, if you wanna make a recommendation, security be handled some, in some way different, this is a recommendation of the board supervisors. Definitely, if they'd like to see the fences stay in it tonight, you can forego that and leave it in.
Okay. Turn on.
Okay, I move that we add a requirement such as the following, which is extracted from this case, the distribution ordinance. Something along the lines of this, "A security plan shall be developed and submitted with an application and must be sufficient to restrict access to only those intended and to deter trespass and theft of cannabis or cannabis products, which may include fencing or other elements."
And just to be clear, that's to replace E, strike E and place that in?
Yeah, that's the motion.
Motion presented by the second.
All second.
Further discussion, Commissioner? If there's not, we'll take a vote on it. Those in favor of the motion presented by Commissioner McQ?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
The motion will be repeated when we go over all the reviews. We'll make sure that everything's, everything's clarified. Anything else on section six? If there's not more, move on to section seven. Okay, well, section eight, section nine, basically the rest of the ordinance, if there's any comments. It seems like for the most part, the rest of it is administrative and it doesn't, I don't know. Nothing catches my eye in terms of land use of the remaining of the ordinance or the amended or proposed ordinance.
Mr. Chair. I think based on, on the last motion and, and the, um, change to section E, that we'd need to go back under definitions to section X, uh, where we have the wildlife exclusionary fencing that's changed to security fencing. And I think we would also need to make that consistent as a security plan approved by the director.
Yes, agreed.
Well, we're not gonna make it say security fencing.
No, we were just gonna completely strike that.
Yeah.
And then that way, there, there need not be wildlife exclusionary fencing.
Okay, that's, that's agreed.
So, is the intent to, to strike X in total or would you
Yes.
Strike, maybe include a definition of secure, security plan there?
The original intent was to strike X.
X, it'll be struck.
We didn't define any, any other ordinance, Joe. I have nothing else.
Well, one big thing, since we're back, we're about to recap, definitions T, recreational public land now looks irrelevant since we deleted the
We can strike that definition.
I think we can strike T.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if there's no further comments, uh, ready to, you know, get the summary of, of the changes we made and suggestions, either staff or counsel or whoever wants to adjust, if necessary, if Yes, recap on the changes and suggestions we've made.
So, from the document that's before you today, the first change I show is the striking under definitions of section T, recreational public lands?
You might. Uh, this is where you would insert the definition of legal under definition.
That's correct, I, I have that further back here. So, we could insert in section T, definition of self-dwelling
Right.
Striking the recreational public lands?
Yes.
Um, I show that section X would be struck in total?
Yes.
I show that section H, H would reflect the state law as it exists. Not a reference to the state law, but the state law as the verbiage exists.
Yes.
I show in section two, B, the reference to Water Works District one has been struck. Correct? The next section under section three, B, multiple license is striking the entire section D, one, two, three, and limited to ag forest, ag and ag preserve at the three hundred and fifty foot setbacks from, uh, another dwelling. No multiple license without a conditional use permit on any other zoned land.
We clarified that paragraph B above that refers to the opt-out.
Yes.
Correct. Paragraph B is re, in reference to the opt-out areas.
Um, I think we also, didn't you also delete C?
Yes, yes.
Completely, you said that.
Yes.
Correct, based on redundancy. Under section three, B.
And, uh, I'm sorry, counsel, we also struck section E. No setbacks?
Yes.
The entire section E?
Right.
All right, under section F, little I three, which the numbering is confusing here. We took the portions of A was struck. B was struck. Portions of C that remain is all multiple license requires a conditional use permit. Use permits are not required for properties that are zoned ag, agricultural preserve or ag forest.
Correct.
So, all multiple licenses required, C and Bs, except A?
Except A.
Okay.
Then under section F, I, the language is, is roughed out here, but no license transfer within an opt-out area unless the license transfer is to remove the cultivation from the opt-out area. Is that consistent with the language?
Re, could you say it again?
No license transfers within the opt-out area unless the transfer removes the cultivation from the opt-out area.
And no transfers in.
Yeah, no transfer in.
And, and we'll clean up that language. On section four, I showed that the title of type three cultivation licenses, um, the recommendation was to go back to registration phases?
Or something staff comes up with that reflects, if you leave a type three, paragraph A doesn't make sense.
Okay.
So, just rename it something.
And then that paragraph A, um, everything is struck past five hundred and thirty license.
Correct.
And little I is struck. And little I is struck, which is the priority will be issued section. And then the, what would now be Section B, little I, what would now be Section One, be applying for properties that are 50 acres or more with the exception of ag designations. Section Five, under Seven, we struck the application for lifetime variance that was added, leaving the remainder. Under Section Six A, changing that to be the correct acronym away from Alma. Under Section Six E, that section is struck with the language provided in the motion that may be altered slightly, but essentially to require a security plan as in our other ordinances that exist. And that is reflected in my document as all the changes.
That's all I have.
All right, so I would just request that, based on what was presented, that you guys make a final motion to adopt the recommendations as contained in the final document.
I move that we recommend to the board of supervisors that we adopt the final changes as reflected by counsel that he just read to us.
So we'll just say, as placed on the record by counsel.
As placed on the record by counsel, thank you.
I'll second that. Those in favor of the motion, those in favor of the motion presented?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Moving on with the agenda.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, please, Commissioner Stewart.
Counsel, thank you very much. You did an excellent job in counseling.
You're welcome.
Moving on with the next item on the agenda, matters from the commission. I do have something to say, this, I will, which brings me, actually, well, first of all, I wanted to make known to the public that there was going to be a meeting on December 20th, a second meeting to address the modulars from the Mountain Community Health District. That meeting is going to be postponed probably after New Year's. Not only holidays, but apparently there's some family emergency issues with engineer on record for that project. So in light of this, that meeting that was set for the 20th of December is going to be pushed back and it will be noticed and when the time is set or when new date is set, the public will be noticed. Just want to make that. Also, Mr. Darrow indicated to me that all this is being recorded and so the meetings are on YouTube. For anyone in the public motion to look at them again or revisit past meetings, it's online for you to do so. With that said, this is, I will not be here for any of the remaining of December meetings, if there's such. This is therefore my last meeting as chairman. I want to say it's been an honor and a pleasure serving as chairman. It's been a great experience and I really want to give props to the commission. I think we, over this year, I think we form a great team. There's just a whole variety of backgrounds and information and we always have a productive discussion. We never get stuck in gridlock, we always move forward and we work as a team. So I want to commend the commission for doing so. With that said, I have nothing else, commissioners, schedule conflicts or anything else? Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, matters from staff.
So we will not be having a meeting on the 20th at all, okay?
No meeting. Right, just want to make sure.
When is the date right?
I don't want to show up if nobody else is here. It's a long drive. Next meeting in January.
January 10th, okay.
All right, well, with that said, it's 10:06, meeting is adjourned.